This conference will now be recorded.
Okay, we're going to call the order of the City of Roswell Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Tuesday, May 25th, 2021, and time is 6:00 PM. We have a call to order, please, or I mean, roll call, please.
Joe Story?
Here.
Commissioner McDaniel?
Present.
Commissioner Aguilar?
Here.
Commissioner Lazard? Commissioner McCormett?
Here.
Commissioner Henderson? Commissioner Lopez?
Here.
All commissioners are present, we have a quorum.
Thank you, Meredith. Mr. Henderson, if you would do the swearing in for us, please.
Okay, I'd ask the people that have done a testimony to stand and raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you give is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, under penalty or perjury? Say, "I do."
I do.
I do.
Or "I will."
Say, "I."
I might.
I might.
One more.
Okay, we're going to move next on the approval of the agenda. We are going to... Kevin, I'll call on you in just a minute if we need be, but we are going to move item number four, case 21-008, up the item number one, and all subsequent items will move down one position. So if I could have a motion to that effect? So moved.
Second.
Kevin, you want to tell us why or anything?
Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, we received a request late this afternoon from the applicant for item number four, case 20, number 21008, the variance request, that he would like to spend some additional time with city staff to work out some specifics on the variance request itself. He has asked for a 30-day continuance to the meeting of June 22nd.
Is he okay to move it to one meeting, or does he want to move it indefinitely until he's ready?
No, he wanted to move it to a date specific, so June 22nd.
Okay. Okay, we had the motion and we had the second. All those in favor of revising the agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Next, we have the approval of minutes from the different P&amp;Z meetings. We have three, but they require individual motions. Also, if you can please look and note that if you were not at a particular meeting, you cannot vote on that, answer that meeting. That being said, I'd take a motion to approve the minutes from the February 23rd, 2021 meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we approve those minutes for the February 23rd meeting.
Second.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Same thing with the item number two of the minutes, approval of the March 23rd, 2021 workshop minutes, please.
Chairman Story, I motion to approve the minutes from the March 23rd, 2021 Planning and Zoning Commission.
Second. Motion in a second to approve the workshop minutes from the March 23rd, 2021 meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. We have two seconds. Now we move on to the third minute section, April 27th, 2021, P&amp;Z workshop minutes. A motion, please.
I can make a motion to approve the minutes from Tuesday, April 27th, meeting minutes.
Motion in a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign. All the minutes are passed. Now we will move into the cases, which we have moved case number four dash 21 dash 008, variance from number four to number one. Do you have any motion to table this item until next month's regular P&amp;Z meeting?
Or continue?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we table case 21008, variance.
Second.
Any discussion? Any questions? I think Kevin already explained what's going on there. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes, will be moved to the meeting in June. Okay, so we are moving that one up. We will go now to case number one, which has become case number two, which is case number 21 dash 005, variance request for advanced rear yard setback.
Chairman Story, I make a motion to waive the reading of the finding of the facts, land use and zoning consideration with respect to case 21 dash 005.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to waive the reading of the finding and facts, et cetera. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. So we are now on case 21 dash 005, which is the address being 2804 South Lee. Owner, Mr. Aguilar. Mr. Aguilar, are you here to speak in favor of this request?
Well, I don't know, I just put in for it to see if I could be able to do it, you know?
Yes.
I wanted to do it for quite some time, and then I found out that I had to put in a variance and stuff, so I just want to see if I could... I mean, the garage has been there ever since I bought the house, you know, so I just want to see if I can make my house a little bigger by adding the garage to my house, too. I just, I have an existing permit now to be able to put a roof on the house, you know, but I was just going to pitch my house, but I put in for this to see if I can go ahead and pitch it all at once and connect it all at once, so I can just be able to connect it to the house, you know? If I can do it, then maybe that'd be a good thing.
So you're going to convert the garage to a usable room?
Yes, well, see, the garage already has water, electricity, a restroom, has everything, you know, and it's in good shape. I mean, it's not beat up or nothing, so I just want to see if I can go ahead and make it part of the house, you know, because I need more room, because them properties on that side of town, you know, they're real small. They have real small bedrooms and stuff, so I want to see if I can make another living quarter for me and my wife and use the other ones for the kids.
And then it would be connected with...
Yes, sir.
...a structure of it?
Yes, sir. In between the garage and the house, there would be another room, which we would use for just another living area, a dining room, or whatever we would use it for, you know?
And does anybody have any questions to Mr. Aguilar? I'm assuming that, I forgot to ask, if you could please state your name and address, so...
Oh, yes, Caesar Aguilar, and I'm at 2804 South Lee Avenue.
Thank you. Anybody from staff have any questions of the applicant?
I have one question, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
On your, and I don't know if you're familiar, Ms. Aguilar?
Yes.
With this drawing?
Yeah.
Okay, as I look at the drawing, it looks like he's also asking for a front setback?
Well, see, the front has been approved, like I said, I already have an existing permit for that, which I already put in to be able to do it. I had a porch, an existing porch back in the day, which is a small one.
And it's gone.
We removed it, and we already put concrete foundations, and they have been passed also by the inspectors, and we're going to put a porch now from corner to corner. So I had a small one, knocked that off, put concrete foundations where that's going to be our main trust now to our pillars that are going to connect our rafters to the new roof, you know?
Well, my question, Ms. Aguilar, is because the setback there is 25 feet, and what you're showing there is a 22-foot setback, and I don't have clarification that the 22 feet has been approved, and are we doing another, are we doing the same variance for the front?
We have an exception for porches that can encroach into the front yard setback by five feet.
Okay.
And he's only encroaching three feet?
Okay.
So it's within our organs.
So we vote, we change that, right?
That's been like that for a while.
For a while. Okay, so that is, the variance of 22 feet is legal within our administrative process right now?
Correct.
Okay, that was a clarification that I needed.
Okay. It's a porch.
No other questions?
Any other questions of Mr. Aguilar from any commissioners? Thank you, Mr. Aguilar.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else wishing to speak in favor of case number 21 dash 005?
Mr. Chairman, I did meet, if you look on your list, upper owner number 12. Francisco Contreras, I think?
Yes.
I did, he was trying to come in here, an elderly gentleman, a shy gentleman, didn't speak English, wanted to know what was just going on, explained it to him. I said, "Are you in favor or against it?" He's in favor. I said, "Well, if you're in favor, you don't have to stay, I'll just relay the information to the commissioner."
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody wishing to speak in opposition of case number 21 dash 005? Last chance. Anybody in opposition? If not, staff comments, please.
Chairman Story, I've reviewed the application. There's a little bit of a side variance for the garage, it's about 4.5 feet from the property line, and the addition will go from the five foot to that corner of the garage, so there might be just a tiny, tiny little variation in the setback on the side setback as well, as I was reviewing this, and staff is in support of this variance application.
Okay.
It does have an addition, as you can see on the site plan, it has an addition that connects the house, or proposed addition that connects the house with the garage.
It's enclosed.
That's going to be enclosed.
Any other staff comments? Kevin, Lewis, anyone?
Mr. Chairman, I did make a site review, including going through the alley. Everything is per the site plan, and I can tell that the variance in the four-and-a-half foot side setback has been there substantially, so I would be in support of it.
Commissioner Story, just one last thought from a more a community development philosophical perspective here. Mr. Aguilar is attempting to do everything correctly. He already has multiple permits in place, he is going ahead and moving forward. He's reinvesting back into his property and obviously reinvesting back into the neighborhood. From a community development perspective, this is the kind of homeowner, and this is the kind of application that we want to move forward. We certainly don't want to stand in the way of anyone who wants to essentially enhance their neighborhood, enhance their own home, and enhance the life, the quality of life for their family. At this point, we are, I think as a team, we are in favor of granting this variance.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions of staff? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I can make a motion to approve case number 21 dash 005, along with the land use and zoning considerations, finding of the facts, staff recommendation, testimony received with the conditions noted from staff. Building permits required and the north wall for the addition connecting to the house allowed to match the existing setbacks.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve case number 21 dash 005. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion passes. And you guys are welcome to leave if you want to.
Or you can hang out and watch the rest of the meeting.
Yeah.
Move on to case number 21 dash 006, is a request for a special use permit to operate the health and beauty spa in the R3 residential zoning district.
Chairman Story, I make a motion to waive the right reading of the finding of the facts and land use and zoning considerations with respect to case 21 dash 006.
I have a motion in a second to waive the reading of the finding of facts and zoning considerations, considerations. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Is there anyone in the audience wishing to speak in favor of case number 21 dash 006?
Mr. Chairman, my name is Dale Journey. I live at 406 North Kentucky. This is my wife, Kristy. We own the property 404, that we're asking a special use permit for. And I'd also like to introduce Jillian Hale from Clovis. She is the owner of Metaspa and Body Shop, to answer any questions that you might have.
Is it true you're a former mayor?
Would one of you guys like to explain exactly what you're asking for or what you're wanting to do, so we have a better idea?
Well, being in R3, this is a professional office, but the special use request, I think, is for each change. The building has been a real estate office. Paul Dahlahan and his wife had a real estate office in the diet center. I had an office there for a while, SecureTel has been in there with a security system. The Oral Credit Union has been there for 15 years or so. So it has been consistently used as a professional. I'll have Jillian explain to you just exactly what she hopes to accomplish by moving her relocating, or expanding actually, her business into businesses.
Yeah. So we're a, we're a medical spa, so we see clients for medical grade spa services, but we also sell retail. And so I think that that's the difference in what has happened in the past and what would be happening is the retail sales. So it's basically going to increase traffic flow in and out of the building and in and out of that area. So...
What type of retail do you sell, or what do you...
So we're a Verminerals boutique, so we sell makeup, we sell skincare products, we sell hair products, we sell just cosmetic, beauty industry products, I guess. It's tricky. It's hard to explain.
No recreational marijuana this time.
Yes.
It's a different kind.
It's a different kind of thing.
I believe the way it's been explained to staff is any of the retail sales are ancillary to the services they provide, much like going to any other beauty salon, hair cutting salon, things like that. Anything retail is ancillary.
Good, thank you. Commissioners, any questions of the applicants?
One of the things, Mr. Chairman, real quick, is I just wanted to make sure that it's noted, it is on the applicant. There are, there are three structures. This primary opposite front, secondary opposite in the back, and then there's a single car garage that, that we very likely turn into a usable facility for her services to expand. So I just wanted to make sure that if you had any questions about that. It's all done, top of the line, we've got a proper permit to do the work that we've done so far, and it'll be very nice, it'll be something that Roswell will be proud of. But I did want you to know that we may expand into the garage area as well.
Staff, how does that affect this application? Does that just kind of encompass all three structures into the one application?
Mr. Chairman, as I read it, it included the three structures.
Okay. Thank you. No other questions from the commissioners?
I have a question for staff, as far as parking. I know it noted has five parking spaces now, and they're talking about three additional spaces. Do you know what's required for parking for this space?
It's 200, one per 200 square feet.
Do you have a calculation on the required parking? Okay.
Let me, let me expand on that. Thank you for bringing that up. We, we are going to, we're going to add parking in the back part of the lot, five, six parking spaces for staff. In front of that second building in the back, front and back building, there's room for three additional parking spaces, and then the five out front. So we feel like we'll be at a point of having 10 to 13 parking spaces. Square footage of the, of the main building is 1,000 square feet, so that would be five.
Five, that's good.
The square footage of the primary building in the back is 400 square feet, and then the garage is...
And so it looks like on this picture, there's access to the alley?
There is, yes.
And the alley is already paved, is that correct?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I drove to the property today, including going through their access. Everything is paved, well-maintained, and I had no problem as city engineer.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else wishing to speak in case number 21 dash 006? Kristy, you want to get up and say something?
She's good.
Got your name on here as the property owner, so... Anyone wish to speak in opposition of case number 21 dash 006? Anybody in opposition? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Chairman Story, I make a motion to approve case number 21 dash 006, along with the land use, zoning consideration, finding of the facts, staff recommendations, and testimony received.
Second.
Meredith, Kevin, do we need to include any of the motion about the parking?
It is stated in their, in their case that they will build additional parking. I would just emphasize that they will follow through as provided.
Can we add that to your amendment?
Yes.
To your amendment?
Motion.
Motion. Thanks.
Says the chairman.
Well, you have to get that, I don't know. Okay, we got a, we got a motion in a second to approve case number 21 dash 006. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Thank you all, you're all welcome to leave.
Thank you.
Or stay. I'm sure you've had your fill a bit.
Thank you.
All right, goodness, stay.
Thank you. See you later.
Thank you.
See you.
Thank you.
Hey, let me get over here, next case.
Look, this is way too nice. Awesome, that's how everything should be.
Now we move to case number 21 dash 007, a request for a changing zoning of six lots from R4 residential to CO1 commercial.
Chairman Story, I need to recuse myself from this case, that 21 dash 007.
So noted. I would accept a motion to waive the reading of the findings of facts and land use and zoning considerations.
I'd like to make a motion to waive the reading of the finding of facts and land use and zoning considerations with respect to case 21 dash 007.
Got a motion in a second. Motion by Sal, second by Steve. Does that help if I repeat who did what? I could do like, Chairman Henderson, the second.
That's good. Whatever the chairman says, the property.
If not, I would... Okay, so we have the motion in a second, did we vote? I have a hard time to know.
Not yet.
No, we have to...
All those in favor, a motion in a second to waive the reading of the finding of facts and land use, to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion passes. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of case 21 dash 007?
On behalf of you, Mr. Chairman, my name is Bill Davis.
Second, Mr. Davis.
I think Mr. Davis needs to be sworn in, because he wasn't in the room.
Counselor Henderson, find your paper, or you just make it up?
Raise your hand.
Raise your right hand, Bill. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're going to give is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, and so help you, under perjury or penalty?
I do.
You're awesome. I would have forgot all that.
So do you want me to...
You're good.
You're good, bud. No, so what's going on? Okay, so I've represented Eden Land for several years, they've got that 325 acre piece of land out there on Mescolero, not Mescolo, Country Club and Sycamore and Union. And so a couple of years ago, we took the corner of Union and Country Club and rezoned it, or actually, we divided it into six lots, and Bill Morris at the time felt like, in his opinion, it was better to leave it zoned R4 and, and just create a variance for professional office buildings. And nobody cared at the time, and so that's what was done two years ago. It's a, it's a new platted subdivision called Bella Piazza. And, and so now I've got some buyers that are interested in buying three of those lots, and they want to put a medical facility in there. And so in visiting with Louis and Kevin and Meredith, it was kind of decided that it makes more sense to zone it commercial office, so for a multitude of reasons. And so one thing led to another, and so that's exactly what we're trying to do, those six lots, five of them along Country Club, belong to Eden Land, and the one immediately to the south now belongs to Mac, I think they call themselves, Jim Mittel. And so both parties would like to move forward, rezoning of those two commercial office space, and the buyer that I've got is a group of developers in town that are interested in buying three of those lots, and so I'm not sure, Kevin, if we're in the same motion, combining those three lots into one?
No, that has to be done under a summary plan.
Okay.
Yeah, that'll be done later.
Okay, but that's basically, we're basically zoning it what should be zoned.
So it's a zone request for all six lots, zone change request for all six lots. Commissioners, any questions of Mr. Davis? And these have already been platted, correct? That's what we did a while back.
Two years ago. Was there, I'm probably wrong here, but I remember something, Bill was real big on putting the parking in the rear of the, of the structures. Was that something we put that had to be done in there?
Kevin is very big on that also, and the buyers are very...
Okay, I just want to make sure you knew that and make sure we...
Yep.
You knew about it.
That's the plan.
Okay. The commissioner, we, we met for several hours with Mr. Davis and the team that's doing the design and development of the new medical facility that's going, it's outpatient medical facility that's going to go in on the three westernmost lots up there. It was decided as part of those discussions that it made more sense for us to, because of course you guys have already seen the preview of the 320 acres that is going in, the 900-unit subdivision. the 900-unit subdivision, we all, we have commercial, general commercial, C2, that will be coming forward on, at the corner of Sycamore and Country Club. This area over here, though, from a consistency perspective, it makes sense to go ahead and rezone it as CO, as opposed to C2, you have so much other medical facilities, office facilities and everything else from this point going easterly on Country Club, that it's more of a consistency rezoning. So after spending some time and looking at their preliminary designs for the medical facility, we felt that it was appropriate to go ahead and rezone all six lots at this time, so that we would have consistency across the board, and once we get the project to the east of here moving forward, consistent zoning all the way across Country Club from Maine all the way to...
My memory still works.
Is, what, are there any plans, or anybody know what might happen with Lot 7? Has that been discussed or talked about, or?
Well...
Which one is Lot 7?
You're talking about Track A on the picture?
Is that the one?
We, that's housing, we did that, we built it on that a couple years ago, too.
You did that subdivision a few months back.
Is that part of what we did on the west side?
Yeah, it was a whole subdivision.
That subdivision you approved in?
Yeah.
That's right.
That was the, that was the first meeting I was at, so that was, the first Planning and Zoning Commission meeting in February.
Yeah.
It's Bella Piazza, you know?
Wow, I thought it was like last year.
No, I remember that meeting, it was my second day on the job, so...
Just throw you in the shark tank.
So much that one that threw me in the tank. That one was easy.
Commissioners, you got any other questions of Mr. Davis?
It's on page 47.
Track A is, is, did you call this app?
Anybody else wishing to speak in favor of case number 21-007? None, is there anyone wishing to speak against case number 21-007? Everybody against 21-007? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve case 21-007 along with land use, zoning consideration, finding of fact, staff recommendations, testimony received.
Motion by Steve, second by James. Any other further comments, questions? If none, everybody in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion, case passes.
Chairman Story, before we go any further, I just want to bring to the commission's attention, land in particular has been, since I've been here, has been exceedingly receptive to upgrading the quality, the style, and the design of many of their developments. I've seen a preliminary layout for the 30 acres at the corner of Sycamore and Country Club, I just saw that yesterday, it is going to be an impressive-looking community commercial development, something like the city has never seen before. The, the project so far, the first three lots that we're seeing coming through here right now with the medical office facilities, with the rear-loaded parking, much better-looking visibility from the front, from the street perspective, you'll see a number of new developments coming through over the next few months that are going to be really first-class here for the city of Roswell, and Eden, Eden Land in particular and their design development team have just been excellent to work with from a staff perspective, very receptive to the things that we're asking them to do.
That's good to hear. Any other business? Meredith, Lewis, anybody?
None.
We will be at the convention center from now on. Back there and...
Unless there's another job for us.
Hey, are there any public comments?
Have a nice evening.
I see some, we have one online with a JS. The Stubbs, would you like to say anything?
I'm just here to watch.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other reports or announcements, anything we need to know of? Staff, commissioners, anyone bring anything up? We are adjourned.
Thank you.